To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mary Ann, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Durkin?
Here.
Ms. Gasko?
Here.
Ms. Towner?
Here.
Mr. Van Horst?
Here.
And Ms. Salas?
Here. We have recognitions this evening?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Towner, would you mind?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Freitas is a board member, want to go up, Mr. Van Horst or Ms. Gasko? Do you want to go up with Dr. Freitas?
I present the certificates.
You can go too as well.
Student recognition, lacrosse. The captain of the girls' lacrosse team in the inaugural varsity season led the team to the first playoff appearance. She ended up being fifth in state in goals with 108 and third in state in ground balls with 81, both of which are school records. She was nominated for Illinois All-State Second Team Honors and is also committed to play Division One Lacrosse at Central Michigan University. Congratulations to Jane Durkin.
Come on up, Jane. Congratulations.
Don't trip your uncle.
Don't trip your uncle.
Please don't.
He's very fragile right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Jane, before you sit down, what are ground balls in lacrosse?
Like your hands on your stick like this.
And you're scooping them.
You scoop it.
Yeah, scoop it up.
So you had 81 ground balls. That's awesome. Congratulations, Jane.
Thank you.
Two students are being recognized in girls' softball. Congratulations to Hannah Organ, pitcher and third base, 2021 All-State, 2021 Conference MVP, Blue Division, 474 batting average, nine doubles, five homers, and 23 RBI's. Struck out 115 batters, 2.05 ERA, 186 batting average. I assume that's the average of the hitters against her, right?
Correct.
Bella Garcia, first base catcher, 2021 All-State, 2021 All-Conference, 444 batting average, 15 doubles, five homers, and 36 RBIs. Congratulations Hannah and Bella.
Come on up. We didn't ask you for a cross. Also want to recognize Coach Schultz is here, Coach Jero, so thank you very much for coming. I also saw our lacrosse coach here, so thank you very much for coming tonight and we thank you for the great job you guys are doing with the program. Thanks.
One player finished the season with one of the most impressive individual seasons in RB history. He was named to the Illinois Baseball Coaches Association Class 3A All-State Team and the Metro Suburban All-Conference Team. He struck out 21 batters against St. Ignatius. He finished with 97 strikeouts and five walks in 42 and a third innings pitched. He beat top 20-ranked Chicago Christian and threw a complete game with 15 strikeouts. He is committed to the University of Notre Dame to play baseball. He had just one game all season with less than double-digit strikeouts, finishing with a 4.53 batting average, nine home runs, 32 RBIs, and 28 runs scored in 23 games. He guided the team to a conference championship and a regional final appearance. He was also recognized as the State of Illinois Best Player for the Class of '22 by Prep Baseball Report. Congratulations to Owen Murphy.
I believe Owen has had a travel baseball term here.
Shocking.
Eats, sleeps, and breathes it, right?
Boys Track. Boys Track finished the season winning the MCS Conference Title, Blue Division, with 11 athletes earning all-conference performance in nine different events. They took fifth in the sectional meet. We qualified 10 athletes down to the IHSA 3A State Meet in Charleston, Illinois. Congratulations to personal best by 13 seconds, Paul Proto.
Proto.
Proto, sorry. Personal best by 10 seconds, Cooper Mars. Freshman record broken, Jack O'Brien, 3200-meter run. Cooper Mars, 800-meter run and 1600-meter run personal best. Boys Track finalists, four-by-800-meter relay, took 24th in state, James Dalton, Jack O'Brien, Paul Proto, Cooper Mars. Alternates, Miles Rubio, Hayden Mars, Brendan Lester, and Ruben Palado. Four-by-400-meter relay, took 21st in state, James Dalton, Paul Proto, Miles Rubio, Cooper Mars. Alternates, Jack O'Brien, Hayden Mars, Iman Ryan, and Tariq Jenkins. 1600-meter run, Paul Proto, took 13th in state, Cooper Mars took 21st in state. Boys?
So let's come on, we got Paul Proto. Mrs. Salas, we call him Cooper. All right, so who do we have here tonight?
Jack O'Brien.
Jack O'Brien?
James?
Paul Proto.
Paul Proto, good job. Mrs. Salas is collecting for Cooper. Congratulations, gentlemen. Great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That's our recognition.
Okay, that's our recognition for this evening.
So as we conclude the recognitions, I think it's great that all the student athletes are participating, and we stressed the importance, student athletes. So some of you that are going off to college, congratulations. We issue nothing but the best at the next level, and please remember all the things you learned here when you were a Bulldog. Continue to compete, but also remember that this is a journey or a pathway for your education, and that's going to be what's going to be taken into the future, well beyond athletics. But again, congratulations to all you. Thank you to all the coaches that showed up tonight, Coach Weiser, Coach Schultz, Coach Jero. Ballsis, thank you very much, Coach Ballsis. And let's give a one big round of applause for all the student athletes. Now we're going to get into the real exciting stuff. You're welcome to stay if you want to. All right, this is a good time to maybe...
We like to trust you.
All right.
And we will move on to visitor comments. We have someone here for visitor comments, you want to come on up? Yeah, it's a little bit... Yeah. Okay. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, we're going to move on to visitor comments.
Ms. Dr. Freitas, want to close those doors?
Thank you very much. Visitor comments, does anyone here wish to speak this evening? Okay, please come on up.
Want to read the message?
I have a small paragraph to read before you start. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." With that being said, please.
Lisa, I'll put my hand up when it gets like 2:30, okay?
Okay. Good evening, my name is Lisa Janounis, and I'm an RB parent of a recent graduate and an incoming freshman who are both music lovers. I'm here on behalf of many parents of music-loving kids, and I wanted to express my support for the RB Music Department. Understand the search for is on for a replacement for Ms. Aubrey Prince, and wanted to stress the importance of finding a stellar educator that will devote the time and energy that she did to the music department and will be the educator that these kids deserve. Coming out of an extremely difficult school year with the pandemic all but halting musical performances, the enrollment numbers for band, orchestra, and choir may be significantly lower, but please do not let that influence your outlook on the health of the future of this department. Arts and music education is so important to the growth and development of young minds. Neuroscientists have found strong links between arts education and cognitive development, thinking, problem-solving, understanding concepts, and info processing. Plus, it provides a mental break in their day, forcing them to use the other side of their brains for a while. It has also been shown to improve memory and develop attention skills that are essential for any student preparing for life beyond high school. Many of us loved Ms. Prince and will miss her and know that filling her shoes will be a monumental task for this RB administration. We wish her well in her new position and will miss her dearly. I only want to express my hope that you'll consider all the artsy musical kids wavering on whether or not to pursue music at the next level and continue to support and provide funding for a strong and healthy music department for years to come. Thank you."
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Are there any additional visitor comments? I would encourage Lisa, you and anyone else, to please stay for the superintendent remarks as well, because it'll address some issues. Moving on to discussion information items, FOIA requests.
We had one FOIA request. SmartProcure, they requested information about purchase orders, dates, line items, and that email response was sent on June 16, 2021. And it's included in the board packet for the board.
Thank you. District goal setting, keeping this on here, my suggestion to the board is that we have a more robust discussion on this at the July meeting.
August.
Excuse me, we're here at the July meeting, thank you. At the August meeting, we've had some preliminary discussions, and I will send out some information over the next month, and we can spend some time on that in August. Excuse me. IASB's Board Evaluation, I don't think we need to address at this point. Special Committee, this was the Special Committee of the Board that was held a week ago last Monday. Thank you, everyone, for your participation, both from the Board and from the administration. I think overall, it was a very robust presentation. I don't have anything to add at this point. I would kind of look around, I know that the superintendent is providing some updates on IASB IDPH guidelines that have come out subsequent to this meeting, so I would suggest we don't take any action at this point, but wait for the superintendent comments, and if we want to explore any additional dialogue, we can do it at that point. Is that okay with everyone? And then finally, communication strategies. This is another, I'll call it a placeholder-type discussion item, and I know I've mentioned it before, I'd like us to give some thought about how we are communicating out messages of the Board, or the good work that the district is doing, or the challenges the district is having. I think this is an area where we could do some improving, and so I'm looking for ideas and suggestions. I'm not saying we need to have this discussion now, but something for us to be thinking about, especially as we get into more Board business and the school year starts, that we want to make sure we're showcasing the positive work of 208 whenever possible. Any additional discussion items from any member of the Board? Looking around? Okay. That being said, we're going to move on to reports, President's Reports. I would ask Tom Jacobs to come up and speak to the Board.
Oh, wow, that's how you guys look.
Yeah, I was going to say, Pat, there's a fetal over there.
I am here to offer a few brief parting thoughts related to my departure from the Board. Those thoughts revolve around empathy, balance, and courage. So first, let me just express what an amazing privilege it has been for me to be able to serve with you on behalf of the entire RB community. It is with really true gratitude that I look back on the past two years, and those two years, as we all know, have been quite unexpected and challenging all of us to maybe think differently and more broadly. And so, in this first part, I'm actually, I think presumably there's some cameras rolling, and I think that's really good in the sense that with an open spot becoming available on the Board, I'd actually like to almost do a little bit of a commercial for what it means to be on that side, sitting behind that table. Because this is a school, right? This is about education, and so when you get elected and you run for things and you're really passionate, of course, when you have the privilege to get elected, it is now your duty to discharge that responsibility, and that, again, in and of itself, is an incredible opportunity. However, the aspect that doesn't get talked about so much is that when you join this community in this active role, of course, you are a student yourself. And so I look back on those two years with great humility, because I realize that in the ongoing lifelong quest of continuing to learn, something we try to instill in our students, that of course, when you're on that side of the table, you get the education in a way that you probably didn't necessarily thought you might get, and I think this is incredibly valuable. And the reason I would sort of summarize this part of my comments under empathy is that I believe that the critical difference between being a responsible Board member and potentially a really valuable Board member is the topic of empathy. If we have learned anything through these trying times where levels of passion and opinion and fear and concern were on display every day, I think what I've learned behind those blue tablecloths is that when you try to understand first and then be understood, it makes all the difference in the world. And it's quite literally empathy to put yourself in the position of whoever is in front of you or at this table or in the school, because the concerns are all valid, and too frequently we jump to conclusions, and we push for our own opinions, and we want to get our way, and that's part of the game, that comes with the job. But again, all I can say to members of the community that might be watching, it is an unbelievable learning experience that I will treasure forever. And the second thing is that I would like to advocate to all of you, sitting Board members, to really keep a focus on balance. And when I say that, it relates to two things specifically. We did work together on the mission statement, and we have now basically codified a balanced approach to education, and I can't recite it, however the 49 words or however many it was, but the part that I remember very specifically is that the balance between academic achievement, which again, is sort of tends to be in the foreground, but the human experience and lifelong learning are much more than that, and so academics, athletics, and the arts. And so I'd actually like to second the comments that were made by the prior speaker on behalf of a robust arts education, and of course, I have a slight bias on this since I'm in the creative field as well, but a full and fulfilled life has everything to do with a commitment and appreciation of the arts. So I'd like to suggest to you, if I may, to enact what we now have actually enshrined in the mission statement. And the second one about balance is that, again, relating to the open spot on the Board, is that I would argue balance is maybe, or should maybe be, one of the key criteria. Hopefully, you're getting lots and lots of application. Nothing would make me happier than if there were 12 people trying to vie for this spot. And if we are so lucky, I would argue that the Board makeup, the design of the Board, is something that would be prudent for the future of the school. We currently have a really robust representation of educators on the Board, which I think is appropriate. I won't have a vote, but I would think we're covered well in that. Ask yourself the question, what other aspects that more truly and fully represents the diverse community that we represent might we want to be looking for? And lastly, I have to say something about courage, because that is another experience that I've had, is that it certainly takes courage to run and to fulfill this duty that we are asked with, but I would argue that we actually need more of it. The times that we're headed into are going to require us to have more of it, not less. And so frequently, my experience is, when you start feeling uncomfortable, you're actually leading. So to all of you, and I've been in that seat again, sometimes, you know, you sort of wonder, should I say something or not? And now that I'm free to say whatever I like, I'll just double down on this and say, when in doubt, please say it. And I have to say to the students and parents and community members who had the courage to come before the Board, you may not have any idea how meaningful that is when you actually speak to representatives that are trying to make prudent decisions. That takes courage, and whether that is a student that shows up here and makes a passionate statement for equity, a student of color who shares personal and probably painful experiences, I take great inspiration from that. I would encourage teachers to have the courage, an innovative teacher, with or without the endorsement of the union, should have the courage and come here and talk about what they feel passionate about. A parent who maybe passionately disagrees with the Board or some policy should have the courage to come here. So it has been a true privilege to serve with all of you on the Board of Education on behalf of the entire RB community. May the school and may equitable, innovative, and inclusive education flourish under your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. So I would just want to say quickly, before you get up, thank you very much for your thoughtful comments, and I think you've indicated tonight the way you've represented and held yourself for these last two years on the Board as a thoughtful professional who really has taken to heart the tasks of the Board of Education. So on behalf of myself, and I think many of us, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much to the room. I learned a lot from you, so.
Thank you very much.
In a positive way, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Are you staying for the rest of the meeting? That's the real question.
Hey, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you. So following that, just some housekeeping for us, Mr. Jacobs' vacancy became effective on July 1. We have 60 days under state statute to fill that vacancy. Dr. Skinkis and I met with counsel just yesterday, we were notified just over the weekend of Tom's decision, and we did look through some dates and calendar and made sure that, had some information to share with the group tonight, I want some feedback on how we proceed. We do have a application, that's a standard application, not dissimilar in many ways to what the students on the Board of Ed filled out to be Board of Education members. I would suggest that we post that tomorrow, which is July 14. We give people through the 26th to apply. That gives kind of two weekends, it's a little bit less than two weeks, but I think it's a good window of time. I would suggest that we ask Mary Ann to do a doodle poll and aiming for that first week of August for interviews. We do interview all the candidates or all the applicants, or we can interview all the applicants, I should say. The interviews would take place in closed session. We would have to come up with some type of interview questions and a scoring rubric to use for those candidates. And to mirror what Tom was saying, I hope we get quite a few candidates. 12 might be a very long night, but I think, you know, if that's, we have 12 applicants, we have 12 applicants, right? Following that, and then again, this is sort of an idealized timeline, we would be able to agree on a new colleague by our meeting scheduled for the 10th. The challenge we're up against is that 60-day calendar is, the clock is ticking already, so we do need to fill this by the 26th, I want to say.
27.
27, excuse me, of August. So, with that being said, that was the logistics of it, I would open it up for discussion, comments, and feedback on how to move forward.
We do need to, I think that was an excellent summary of the dates. I think the one question we asked the attorney that didn't touch on has to be done in person.
Yeah, that's a good point, so.
Cannot be done on Zoom.
Right. So when we ask for availability, this does have to be an in-person, closed-session discussion.
And we need four people for core.
Absolutely, yes.
So at least four people have to be available on any one night for the interviews.
In person. Correct. And my suggestion is if someone is not able to be here, we'll have, like I said, a scoring rubric that we could share with everyone, and if we need to schedule a follow-up discussion, we could do that at a subsequent point, although, again, ideally, I'd like us to take care of it in one window of time. But thank you, that was a good point.
Is there any way this, outside of, it's obviously been mentioned in this meeting, and on the website, but how will we be working to get this more publicly?
No, that's a great question.
We'll put it on the website, so we were talking about communications, very similar to like the little blast I sent out yesterday about the mask will be required and some of those things. We'll post it on the website, we'll send it to Instagram and Facebook, which we have over 800 followers on both, so.
But I would also think that we all should use our individual rolodexes and network as much as possible.
My question is, how public can I be?
Absolutely. Yeah, so the vacancy is public at this point, and the application itself will be available tomorrow sometime. And I think we could ask that you would share the application with everyone on the Board so that we have it ready.
Yeah, I think we're going to get a copy of that tonight.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Did I miss anything, all of it? You think?
No, I think we got it all.
Okay. So can we move on to the President's or to the Superintendent's Report at this point?
Good job, Ms. Salas, that was a good summary. As Ms. Salas stated earlier, we had the Special Committee, the whole Board occurred on June 28th. The administration provided an in-depth draft action plan for the upcoming school year. Dr. Freitas and his team are working on implementing that plan and planning and preparing for that plan over the next four weeks or so to, we have our first day of school. Teachers report, I believe, on August 12, right? There's two institute days, and then students report on August 16. I did send out an email blast to staff and students yesterday, reminding everybody that we will be starting school on August 16th in a traditional school schedule, full in-person learning. The main open questions that were covered in that committee presentation were touched upon in the updated guidance that was released by the IDPH and ISBE on Friday afternoon. And basically, they have adopted the CDC's guidance for returning to school and in-person learning. First and foremost, the most important thing is all those organizations recognize the importance of getting kids back in school full-time, and that will be our top priority at RB, is to do it in a safe fashion and have kids back in school full-time. The three open questions were mask requirements. One open question, number one, was mask requirements. And so we started to implement this over the summer based on the updated athletic guidance that came out from the IDPH, and it will be a very similar stance for the opening of school. Masks will be required for anybody that's unvaccinated. That goes for students, staff, and visitors. We did confirm with legal that we can collect that information or confirm vaccination information from staff and students. Whether we will do that or how we will do that and enforce those expectations is still to be determined. It's too early. I know there's a webinar by our legal counsel tomorrow. All the superintendent and principal associations are meeting, because each school district will be treated, have the flexibility to treat this a little differently. But we do have a high vaccination rate in our three main communities that feed into the high school. I know we were at about an 85% vaccination rate amongst our staff before we left for summer break, and so we will continue to enforce what we've been doing this summer, which our masks will be required for all unvaccinated students, staff, and visitors to the school. Social distancing was still an open requirement, and again, it's still, they clarified in the updated guidance that three feet is the, should be the social distancing that schools try to implement, but they did preface to say that if it gets in the way of in-person learning... learning, other mitigations could be taken so that if you can't do three feet, it should be as much as possible. But we were already practicing three feet before, in the fourth quarter, when we were able to do four days a week of in-person learning, so we will continue to do three feet. Proof of vaccination, I touched on already. Quarantine, students and staff who are vaccinated, as long as they are asymptomatic, do not have to quarantine. I know that was a big issue with parents because students, you know, we went to the state. One thing the state did back in the spring is they updated the guidance on social distancing to three feet, but for contact tracing purposes, they left it at six feet. So even though they were saying it was okay to have kids three feet apart, when you had to do contact tracing for a close contact or a positive case, you went in a six-foot radius from that student. So we're going to use three-foot radius throughout this upcoming school year. And again, the proof of vaccination, the confirmation of that, is just more or less to help with contact tracing. That's one of the most important things. That will help expedite contact tracing so that we can quarantine any students that haven't been vaccinated or staff that haven't been vaccinated that need to quarantine. We still will have asymptomatic testing in the nurse's office. We implemented that at the end of last school year, and we'll have that again to start this school year. We're looking in to whether or not we need to do screen testing for high-risk athletics in the fall for students who are not vaccinated. We're still working through some things with that on whether or not we will implement that. But I do think, based on the draft that we shared at the committee on June 28th with the board and where we are at with the updated guidance, we're in a really good place. I think we're ready to bring students back. The PowerPoint has been posted online. We had our first day of residency today. I'm sure Dr. Freitas will touch on that. We've already been implementing some of these mask guidelines this summer with our summer camps, so I, again, I do think we're in a strong place to return, knock on wood. And you know, I don't want to jinx anything, but that's my update in regards to returning in August. Fine arts staffing. You know, the high school had a recent resignation, as the visitor mentioned. Aubrey Prince did a fantastic job as our vocal music director and all the things she did in our music department and as an instructional coach. So I wanted to provide an update and wish Aubrey the best of luck as she moves to Oregon to take on a new position, but also provide an update on the staffing process. The approved staffing for next year for the music department was 2.6 FTE. That will remain, so there was no reduction in staffing. Ms. Prince and Mr. Baum are the two full-time employees, and Mr. Loeb was a part-time employee. Now, with the resignation, with Ms. Prince resigning to take that position, the overall staffing remains 2.6, but Mr. Loeb will now become the full-time based on seniority and contract language. The new hire for the music department will be part-time. Mr. Loeb's assignment still will include the District 96 sections, and we understand the importance of trying to continue to build our orchestra numbers, so we'll continue to have that as part of his full-time position. You know, the vocal music person is going for approval tonight to the board in closed session. They did a very, the building administration did a very robust interview process and presentation of candidates. I know they involved parents from the fine arts music sponsors, as well as, I believe some of the finalists had to conduct a choral performance with madrigal singers, so the students were involved in this selection process, and we think we have a really strong candidate. Originally, that candidate was slated to be a .6. We think there's a possibility to make them a .8, so we are moving in the right direction in regards to the fine arts, and that should hopefully be approved tonight. Curriculum advisory, there was no update. You know, back again, as I touch on the curriculum advisory, Joe, just with the fine arts, you know, we have to remember that the student course selections, and I think the parents summed it up, that even though numbers were a little down this year in music, our visual arts numbers went up by two sections. So we kept staffing in the visual and performing arts. It just was more on the visual side this upcoming school year. So with some new candidates and hopefully with Mr. Loeb working at District 96, we can continue to grow the performing arts side of our fine arts department. Facilities advisory council, we have no update at this time. Finance advisory, tentative budget was approved at the June meeting. Dr. Smetana updated the budget with the June 30 actual. She'll cover those in her presentation tonight. She also added information yesterday to the packet from the TTO, so I think our financials for June 30th can be discussed tonight. Personnel advisory, we're still trying to fill a few vacancies, both certified and non-certified, but we will be on pace to have everybody fully staffed for the start of school in August. Included in your packet tonight for the policy advisory council is Press Packet 107 for our new board members. That's a service we pay for out of the School Board Association. They help keep our press, our policy manual up to date with legal updates and any changes in state statutes or school code. So what will happen from now until August, I will try to coordinate a policy advisory council meeting to review Press Packet 107, and we'll bring recommendations to the August board meeting. Policy 186, 185, which was regarding the remote learning, I still want to keep that table at this time. I think with the updated guidance, we're in a good place, and I think the specification from the ISBE that remote learning should only be provided for students who cannot get vaccinated and are subject to a quarantine, I think we're okay there to implement remote learning. We still have the flexibility to work with West 40 and one of their alternative learning opportunities, which the board approved in June, so I think we can keep that table for right now.
I would ask a question. Do we assume that parents that have had a concern have already reached out, and are we already underway?
We have fielded one request, and when it was clarified that it will not be instruction from RB teachers, and it would be at West 40, we were working with those families to try to have their student attend, so it's been minimal requests from any families.
I just wanted to make sure that people who did have concerns knew to reach out.
And Dr. Freitas will continue to advertise that in his communications to students and staff. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And purchase sale, lease of land, I have no updates on that, so I believe that's it for the superintendent report. I went kind of quick, so if there's any questions, I'm open. If anybody has any questions.
You're going to send out a doodle for us for policy between now and the next meeting?
Yes, Ms. Nardi will work on scheduling that.
Okay.
And that we can still do if advisory council, if it works, if we need to do that via Zoom, we can do that via Zoom.
Or maybe we can.
That's you and I.
Yeah, it's just us, maybe we can even do that tonight while we're here. If you got your calendar, if you want to call them.
Oh, you mean come out with the date before?
After the date.
I thought you meant due.
I thought you meant.
Yes, 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 that would be great.
Five emails, you know?
Yes, yes, I have everything right here.
Good point.
That's all we need.
It's hard, we're a hard group to schedule, so the better we can do.
Busy, busy, busy. Okay, great, so sometime.
We're all here now, why not just do it now?
Yep. Any other questions for the superintendent? Dr. Smetana, turn it over to you.
Good evening. Tonight I'll provide the board with financial information for the month of June, which represents the entire fiscal year. Beginning on Board Book page 12 is the monthly summary report. You'll see the total operating revenue for the month was $608,600, with 43% coming from food service reimbursement, 31% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and 24% coming from local funding, primarily summer programs as well as course fees towards the end of the school year. The total operating expenditures for the month were a little over $3 million, with 53% towards salary and benefits, 16% for special education tuition, and 16% for purchase services, primarily food service for RB as well as the satellite schools that flows through RB as well. Looking at the next page, at the monthly financial statements, you'll see that the fund balances shows that the district ended fiscal year '21 with a surplus of $1,203,864 in its operating funds. And if you go to the next page, you'll see that the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 108.9% of our budgeted revenue for this year, which helps explains the surplus. This percentage equals an additional $2,306,164 in revenue above what we budgeted in the fiscal year. This percent is obviously significantly higher than where we were at this time last fiscal year. I didn't have these numbers available to put in my report, but after receiving and being able to analyze the budget on Monday, I was able to kind of look at the revenue to see where a lot of it was over budget. And $760,000 over budget came from food service reimbursement. That was both from the satellite schools as well as the federal grant that we received. The satellite schools also received the same federal grant, and so obviously their expenditures went up, which, you know, came through us and they reimbursed us in revenue.
And really quickly, that federal grant we only became aware of after the budget was?
Yes, in September. And that strictly, that federal grant too was strictly for food. I know there had been some questions in the community about why aren't we using it for other things, but that was strictly for food service for our students.
Basically in response to COVID, yes?
Correct, yes.
When does that end, Kristin?
It ends August 11th is when we are.
Okay, that's why we've been providing lunches over the summer.
Breakfast and lunches, yes.
Right.
An additional $530,000 of extra revenue came in federal grants from the Digital Equity Grant and SIR I and SIR II, which also became available to us after the budget process was completed. So right there alone is $1.3 million in revenue that we wouldn't have been able to predict. Additionally, $410,000 in special ed reimbursement, room and board, came in, and that was room and board and another special ed reimbursement. But a lot of that was due to back payments from the previous fiscal year that we just got this fiscal year. There's always some backlog, but you never know how much, and so that was a significant amount that we hadn't seen in a long time. And then $189,657 in CPRT. The state provides an estimate every year. The estimate was 320, and we received like $509,000. And so these are things that are outside of our control. So those were certainly the biggest categories. I have other amounts that, you know, account for the whole 2.3 million, but those were the significant categories, all of which were out of our control.
I think it's important to just reiterate, you know, almost 1.5, 1.3 million were from federal dollars and grants that we weren't expecting.
All related to COVID.
Correct. COVID relief.
And if you include special ed, which is also federal and state reimbursement, yes, it was 1.7. And so it's significant.
It's just, it's hard for Kristin and I to do, can't predict some of this stuff, when you're going to get paid, what grants are going to come open, when they're going to give you the money, what, you know, so I think it's important to just highlight.
Well, with the state of Illinois notoriously being late with reimbursements, it is very hard to nail it down, right?
Yes, yes.
The special ed is a great example of that.
And had the, you know, had those grants come out two months earlier, we would have been able to capture them in our budget. So that's unfortunately the timing that occurred.
Do you have the SIR III grant information yet from the state, or is that still pending?
I just got approval and just received the application this week.
Okay.
So that's my next big task. Because ultimately, I will have to create new accounts for each grant line item, and so I'll have to throw those into the budget. So you'll see those in the budget in August. Right now, they're just included in other accounts.
Gotcha, okay.
So, yeah, thanks.
I thought the chances of that being approved before our September board meeting when we approve the final budget, close?
I don't know.
With everybody filling it, I think it's going to take a long time.
I'm trying to get it done by the end of this month, so that hopefully we're one of the first in line for approval.
I'm not, I know you'll be excellent with your, you know, expediting that process, I'm just saying.
We never know how long it takes.
Yeah, with the state, who's going to be reviewing it?
It's possible we would need to do a budget within a budget embedded in a budget with them as separate accounts, is that what you're saying?
No, we will, we will have, now that I have access to the grant, they give you the amount of which you can receive, and so I will know at least how much money is initially allocated to us. Whether or not they come out and there's more money after the fact, like SIR II was, or they release additional money, that will be outside of our control.
But we're going to include everything that we've laid out in the plan.
Correct, it's already included in the budget.
Because we've hired those people and moved forward.
Yes, it's already included in the budget, it's just a shell game of moving them to a different account.
Okay.
Is there any possibility that we wouldn't get all the money, or that we'd be denied some of it?
No, worst, like worst-case scenario is when you apply for the grant, one line item isn't approved or two items aren't approved, and you either need to revise to be in compliance or you'll need, and still allocate that money towards whatever you wanted, or if it's really doesn't apply, then you need to put that money towards something else. In regards to property tax, we did not receive any additional money in the month of June for property tax, and we will not receive any money. I confirmed that with a township treasurer this morning. So looking at property tax in both current year line items and prior year collection, we did collect 100.4% of what we budgeted for both of those line items. Moving on to the summary of expenditures on the next page.
Kristin, if we go back to property tax real quick?
Sure.
Did we adjust the budget yet for next year?
I did, yes. I did in this, that's the only thing I.
Because we budgeted this past year at 98, correct?
97.
97.
And I put in the budget 99%, because we will capture some of the money from this fiscal year as well as, you know, the money from next fiscal year.
Okay.
I mean, I do think it will be slightly delayed. The first, the next installment will be slightly delayed, it looks like, but that won't have a material impact on the budget.
Correct.
It's good to have a fund balance.
Yes, because we have a fund balance, correct. Summary of expenditures, so it shows that the district has spent 98.2% of the budgeted expenditure items for the year. This amount is similar to this time last fiscal year. That also, you know, does contribute to the surplus because we didn't spend as much money as we said we were going to. And then included for the board, just for your information, I always include the statement of revenue and expenditures, which lists all of the accounts, as well as the budgeted amounts and what we spend, as well as student activity accounts. And then I have some other items as well to report out on. The first is the wellness incentive. Some of the older board members have heard me share this out earlier in the year, but we were just notified for the first time since the program existed, we have met all three tiers for the wellness incentive, which means that we've earned $18,621.45 for the district. And we met the requirements. Tier one is having 50% of your members that are enrolled in insurance participate in a wellness screening, and so we met that, and I shared that out earlier in the year, which is really impressive given COVID and, you know, trying to make people feel, helping people feel comfortable to do that in October. Tier two was implementing a wellness program by meeting six different criteria and really having an action-based plan. One of the ways we did that was through the holiday hustle that you heard about earlier in the year. And then tier three is, you know, achieving 65% or higher on the overall aggregate well-being score. That's a part of that wellness screening. So I'm really excited about that and wanted to share that with the board, and wanted to thank all of the teachers and staff members who participated in the wellness screening, because if you don't pass tier one, you can't progress to tier two or tier three. So I'm really grateful that they are taking an active role in their health. The next item is a follow-up from Ms. Taylor's request last board meeting. I wanted to share out the student fees collected for second semester in the past three years. You can see this year, we collected $210,000 roughly, and that is similar to 2019.
Set a screen, can we?
Oh, sorry, this would go back to the first page.
Eleven, the end of page 11.
That's Mary Ann.
Thank you.
There you go, up a little bit.
So if you scroll up, you can see in 2021 this year, sorry, the other way, Mary Ann, you can see that we are at $210,000, and that is roughly similar to where we were in 2019. You can see the impact of COVID looking at 2020, and this is just for the second semester. Thank you. And then lastly, I've been keeping track of COVID-related expenditures and sharing out with the board on a quarterly basis. Mary Ann, this is on page 31, please. So if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see that the district spent $907,492 on COVID-related expenses, with the majority being spent on, as we previously talked about, food service, which was $416,516. $312,127 on staffing to keep security staff members and paraprofessionals full-time as we were working half-day schedules with students in the building. $56,000. full-time as we were working half-day schedules with students in the building, $56,604 on buildings and grounds-related items, a majority of this were PPE-related items, shields, face masks, things of that nature, and then $68,000 roughly on technology. And that concludes my report for tonight. Are there any additional questions?
And that is in addition to what we spent at the end of 2020 related to COVID.
Correct.
Just to be, to be clear, this was the FY '21 expenditure. So although we're sitting in a better place now with the budget, we certainly had some expenditures that were unanticipated prior.
So because of COVID, we got about 1.7 billion through grants, but we spent about 900,000 just on COVID. We would not have spent any of this money had we not had the epidemic and the issues that we get, correct? Are these strictly correct?
Correct, about like 412,000 that's on that list was made up in reimbursements in that federal grant, I mean.
Yeah.
But yes, you're correct, some of this did balance out, some of it did not.
Okay.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you. Dr. Freitas.
Hi, good evening, board members.
I think it is your chance.
You know, just want to thank everyone that I saw at the Fourth of July parades, and I believe I saw many of you there. You know, it was nice hearing from the community that it was the first time that we've marched in all three towns in quite a while. You know, they were thrilled, they were excited, so, you know, I want to thank Madeline Dodd, James Baum, and Rebecca Arp, you know, that lead the palms and the cheer, and of course the pet band, our band, but we had a great showing, you know, in all three communities. I personally marched with my pregnant wife and kids, and, you know, we got some exercise. The North Riverside parade was hot, Riverside was cool, Brookfield was right in the middle, but we had a great time. And I want to thank all the community members, you know, that came out, and many of you that I saw, you know, during the Fourth of July holiday parades in our community. Can you believe it, guys, in a month, we'll be returning to full in-person learning, full offerings of extracurricular activities, and strategic support for our students' social, emotional, and academic needs. And we're starting school in four weeks, and I'm excited. Our safe return to in-person learning plan has been shared with all stakeholders. Our programs will be cleverly supported, evaluated for its effectiveness via pre- and post-assessments and surveys when needed. Summer School Session 2 has begun. We have students enrolled in credit recovery courses at no cost and academic workshops. The free lunch program still continues, it's been running from June 2nd through August 11th, and the students are taking advantage of the food. We have, we're giving food, breakfast and lunch on Mondays and Wednesdays from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. by door A. Vaccination opportunities are still available locally, you know, in many municipal offices. Please check our website, vaccines.gov, you type in your zip code and they will give you the closest place to you where you can be vaccinated. Vaccines are available for people ages 12 and up. Students who are fully vaccinated, when I need to quarantine, I said earlier, falling in on exposure, they're asymptomatic. Residency days began today, you know, I probably saw maybe 300 or 400 parents come in, and everyone was excited about full in-person learning. People are excited that if they're vaccinated, they don't have to wear a mask, but more importantly, parents, they want their kids back in school, full day with everything they enjoy, and I'm proud to say that we will have that. And we've actually, and actually today, we actually started collecting vaccination information well with our nurse. Next residency, excuse me, next residency days, we have July 15 from 11:00 to 7, July 21, 11:00 to 7, and July 29 from 11:00 to 7.
If they haven't made their appointment, where do they go, Dr. Freitas?
If they haven't made their appointments, you know, come see us to the main office, okay, and we'll, and we'll take care of that as well.
Contact the main office?
Yeah, please contact the main, the main office.
And I think maybe to Mr. Van Horst's question earlier, so if someone does not go through the residency and they are concerned about the return to school, who should they reach out to?
The main office, yeah.
The main office?
Yeah, reach out to the main office, of course, yep. Yearbook distributions were created at the end of July, and I know I shared another day, and people are emailing me, they want their yearbooks, they want their memories, right, they want Rouser, we're going to get Rouser, there's just been some delays kind of the publishing, you know, companies, they're printing for us and other schools, but, you know, July 29 will be the day we have more details, okay, on our website. Freshen Orientation will be held on August 11 from 9:00 to 11:00. And then we will have a family welcome night that same evening from 4:00 to 6:00 for all those students and families that didn't get an opportunity to do an orientation last year. So that day we'll have kind of two orientations, one for the freshman in the morning, and then for the student that didn't have an opportunity to have their own orientation, we'll have something for them in the evening from 4:00 to 6:00.
Has an invitation been sent out to those, so they'd be your, like, sophomores, correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
And so has something been sent out to sophomore families?
We'll be sending out something this week. Activities and athletics, right now currently over 30 summer athletic and activity camps have been scheduled to run this summer. For more information, we have it on our website, but if you guys, you know, look at our fields, look at our stadium, students, they're busy from the morning to the evening, we're back with our athletic camps, you know, we're back, you know, this is a great transition period to the community, to board members, we're back, you know, we're back doing our activities, we're going to be back fully in-person learning, we're back to normal. I know there's no new normal, but, excuse me, there's no normal as before, but we're kind of back to, you know, our business as usual, the good business we've done day in and day out here at RB. And that concludes my principal's report.
Any questions? Moving on, consent agenda.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items, approves minutes from the meetings held on June 8 and June 28, 2021, open and close as presented in the July 13, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gasko.
Any questions? Take the roll. Consent.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Ales?
Yes. Old business. We don't have any life safety.
No update on the life safety.
Okay. Is there any action on the tentative budget? No. And then policies 6185 you mentioned will keep it there in old business.
Correct, Kristen, on the tentative budget, all you did was update the property taxes, correct?
Updated the property taxes, I added the June 30 actuals, and I updated the executive summary page.
So all I would say to the board is that for the June 30 actuals is take a good review of the budget from today until the August meeting, just to see if there's any questions you have on whether was there significant changes, you could see that now that we have the full wrap of the June 30 picture from 2020, fiscal year '21 on there.
Yeah, I would also add, I have not had the time to look at every account based off of the June 30 actuals, which is what I usually do, and so there could be some changes in August, and I will highlight those changes when I bring them, but I haven't had time based off of the June 30 actuals to adjust anything in the budget other than the property tax.
It came in so late, no, that's, thank you, that makes sense. Moving on to new business, payment of bills.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the July 13, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Do we have a second?
Second by Mr. Durkin.
Any discussion, any questions on these?
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Ales?
Yes. Student advisors to the Board of Education, this is maybe where I'll miss Mr. Jacob's eloquence, if I could just say something quickly. So he and I did interview six candidates total, along with Dr. Freitas and Dr. Skinkis, and, you know, our students continue to impress, we really have had some excellent candidates that presented, and, you know, we made a choice to, for two of them to serve as the student advisors to the Board of Education next year. Do you want to give some background to either one, or want to wait till we welcome them in August?
Just welcome them in August.
Okay.
Two candidates though that were nominated were Claire Harrison and Elena Pinedo.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the appointments of Claire Harrison and Elena Pinedo as student advisors to the Board of Education as presented in the July 13, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. Need a second?
Second.
This is an all in favor.
Any discussion, any questions on them? No? Okay, I think, I think.
Both students had obligations, I think one's had drum major camp, and I think the other students had a softball tournament.
Yeah, we have a real.
Very busy. That's good, that's good.
They had impressive resumes for rising seniors. We don't need a roll call here, we're just all in favor, is that correct?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on. Disposal of surplus.
The Board of Education, do I have to read that whole thing? No, just this, right?
We skipped press plus, but we already covered that.
No, I meant, there was like a long thing that went with the disposal of property, but I just have to read this, right?
Correct.
Okay, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby determines that the personal property listed in Exhibit 1, surplus personal property, is no longer needed and should be sold or disposed of in a manner in the best interest of the school district as presented in the July 13, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Ruska.
Any questions on that? This is pretty standard. Thank you.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
And Ms. Ales?
Yes. I don't think we need to address the press plus issue, that just stays as.
Correct.
Become an old issue, okay. Moving on to the PTAB.
Back in 2013, we put together a cooperative to help us with property tax appeals, and so this will just formalize a legal counsel to intervene on behalf of the cooperative. It's us, District 96, the library board, and I believe those are the three main entities that make up the cooperative.
Is it, is it Riverside or Brookfield Library?
North Riverside Library.
North Riverside Library.
Yes.
There's a question submitted regarding payment. We pay for our services only when work is completed on our behalf related to property tax appeal, and we split the legal bills based off of the percent of the combined tax rates of the three districts. So ours is 36%, District 96 is 58%, and the library is 6%.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this is housekeeping, we do this every year.
Correct.
Correct? The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the PTAB resolution authorizing Fransik PC to intervene on all 2020, 2022 PTAB assessment appeals as presented in the July 31, 2021.
July 13.
I'm sorry, excuse me, in the July 13, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Laura.
Second, Ms. Ruska.
Any questions, discussion?
It's every, it's every three years with the triennial, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that makes sense, yeah. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Ales?
Yes.
Finally, visual image photography contract.
Kristen added this, and Kristen, I'll provide a summary real quick, this is for our athletic photos, correct?
Sure, yes. VIP, our visual image photography, is a company that currently provides athletic photos for our athletic teams each season. The services cost neutral to the district, and parents have the option if they want to buy either team or individual photos. VIP also provides several complimentary products to the district. The district does receive 10% commission on all high school sports, net sales over $1,000 per program, and so it doesn't amount to a lot of money. You can see in 1920, we received $737.66, all which went back to the athletic programs to use to support students. Last year due to COVID, we didn't receive any money in commission. The athletic department's been very satisfied with the quality of photos and the level of service, and so I would recommend that the board approve the attached three-year agreement pending review by legal counsel. As this is, we would like to have this in place for August so we can schedule picture dates for fall teams.
Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the three-year contract with Visual Image Photography, Inc., pending review by legal counsel as presented in the July 13, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ruska.
Need a roll call, please, any discussion first? I don't think anyone had any questions on this? We can go ahead and do a roll call then. Thank you.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Ales?
Yes. This is the second opportunity now, moving on to visitor's statements. Is anyone else here interested in presenting to the board? Not seeing any, we'll move on. We did not have any new discussion items presented by any of my colleagues or consideration of items for future meetings. We have some, some work cut out for us this summer, obviously. Matters for closed session, do we have matters for closed session?
Yes, under the list, if you want to read those.
We have matters for closed session, personnel, purchase, purchase sale or lease of real property, pending or imminent litigation, collective negotiation, school safety. Could you read the resolution, please?
I will. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Could we have a second?
Second. Second, Ryan Van Hurst?
Mr. Van Hurst?
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Town, Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
And Ms. Ales?
Yes. Okay. We are now going to move to closed session, take five minutes, everyone.